All right. Good night. Welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectment Highway and Cemetery Commissioners, Monday, April 24th, 2023. As always, we'll call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, approving the minutes. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of March 27, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. What's the second part of that?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve but not release the executive session minutes of March 27, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Reappointments. Steven Rogerson as Veterans Agent, term to expire April 30th, 2024. Steve there? No?
Steve has minor surgery, so he's not here.
What's the board's pleasure, Mr. Marcy?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Steven Rogerson as our Veterans Agent with the term to expire April 30th, 2024.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Steve. Resignation. Zoning Board of Appeals, Jennifer Canoyer, effective April 24th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman.
Sullivan.
Take a motion we accept with regret and have the town administrator compose a letter on the board's behalf with your signature, accepting Jen Canoyer's resignation, April 24th, 2023.
Second. With regret.
Discussion.
Just want to thank her for her service, Mr. Chair. Anybody that paid attention during COVID, Jen was born to help, not ZBA, but Jen was always around. She's in the office for water, sewer, zoning board. She's always been accommodating and always goes the extra mile to help Town of Dudley and its residents.
Well said, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Jen. All right, citizens' comments. Anyone have anything to talk about that's not currently on the agenda? All right, see you none.
They're all running out.
I'm gonna go first, but I guess I will. My name is Lynette Lepper, representing the Agricultural Commission, and I just wanted to let you and everyone at home know that we will be hosting the Second Annual Dudley Grows Together Plant Hop on Saturday, May 20th, from 9:00 to noon. We will have locations all throughout town. Farmers will be selling their seedlings and nonprofit groups will be giving out information, and it's just gonna be a great day for anyone who wants to get their hands in the dirt. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, are you next?
Good evening. Through the chair, I would like to read the ballot for tomorrow's election.
Sure.
Shall the Town of Dudley be allowed to assess an additional $4,846,597 for the purpose of operational expenses for the Dudley Charlton Regional School District in the amount of $3,172,083, and operational expenses for the Town of Dudley in the amount of $1,674,514 for the fiscal year July 2023? Am I wrong to think operational expenses are day-to-day expenses such as heat, lights, salary, insurance, scotch tape, et cetera? Am I wrong to believe the Shepherd Hill feasibility study at $463,000 and the middle school roof at $1,439,000 are capital expenses? This ballot never mentions these capital expenses. It only requires the school committee to use the money for operational expenses. Prop two and a half is never mentioned, which is what this election is all about. It never mentions the stabilization account the school committee wants to establish. In order to establish this account, isn't it necessary to have the blessings of Dudley residents in the form of a vote? Who wrote this ballot question? Why was it written in such a vague manner? If you want to verify any information on voting, please call the Office of the Secretary of State, that would be Bill Galvin, at 617-727-2828, or consult Mass General Laws, Part 1, Title 1, Title 9, Chapter 59, Section 21(c). To sum things up, you are asking the people of Dudley to vote for something that is not even on the ballot. Gentlemen, when I see a ballot like the one presented, I feel like we are losing our town. It is very disrespectful to the voters of Dudley to present a special election, Prop two and a half override ballot like this, with so little information for the voter. Thank you for your time.
I think that has to be addressed, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sullivan?
I mean, I defer to the administrator, but every time I've been involved with a ballot question, whether it's debt exclusion, override, usually the language is spelled out by the state what has to be included in the question. Legal reviews it, and the actual breakdown on potential income has never been included. And furthermore, we had a series of meetings over the last probably year where Mr. Lamash has presented on behalf of the school committee. He's presented the impetus for the override. He has explained, and Mr. Matthew and they have explained what their funds are going to be used for. And on the town side, we've done the same thing at the same hearings, same public meetings as the school has. And yes, I understand money's allocated for a specific purpose the first year doesn't necessarily mean for the letter that it'd be allocated the second year, but the school has indicated, on the basis of their multiple presentations, what their intention is. The belief or the thought that it could have been debt excluded as opposed to override, and again, I'm not trying to speak for the schools, but Mr. Lamash has presented, and Mr. Ruder has also verified, that yes, we have to go to a town meeting to set up that stabilization fund. And the reason they were asking, the way they set it up, the way they did, was to help offset further assessments down the road, assessments which will come no matter if the override is successful or fails. So, I think we've done, we, ubiquitous we, the board, school committee, did a great job getting information out, but I think the bottom line about the way the question is formulated, and again, I defer to Mr. Ruder if I'm incorrect, is the language is prescribed by the state, and it's been reviewed by our council, and to call it vague is not accurate, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Sullivan's correct, it's gone through legal review. It was written in accordance with TLS guidelines, and we've spoken about it at multiple forums, including the plan to use the educational stabilization account. I think there's a newspaper article where I put an op-ed in that even spelled it out as part of that op-ed. It's been on cable, it's been on social media, it's been on the website, it's been posted on the signboards, there's printed information available here. I think that it's a pretty clear plan.
Thank you.
Yes, Richard Raymond, Corbin Road, Dudley, Mass. Obviously Dudley, Mass. I got a copy of the sample ballot here, specimen ballot that you posted online, and nowhere on a sample ballot does it call for an override or a debt exclusion or anything else, just some raw numbers. And unless somebody paid strict attention to what Mr. Ruder has just described, you know, public information, which shouldn't be used as a ballot question, get out information, yes, but when you read the ballot, that's what you're voting on, what's in the ballot, and only what's in the ballot. And the only thing in the ballot are raw numbers. Not how you're gonna obtain those raw numbers of an override or a debt exclusion. There's no identification anywhere on that ballot to whether it's a debt exclusion or an override. And the ballot will drive it, not the newspapers, not the media, not social media, it's the ballot. And this ballot is very misleading. It's just full of raw numbers, not how you're gonna get to those raw numbers, whether it's gonna be an override or a debt exclusion. And the April 10th meeting was very loud and clear. There was a lot of concern by concerned citizens, and that was a well-attended meeting, okay? You know, hosted by yourself and the school committee, which the school committee did most of the talking, okay, and I understand that it had most of the request. But this ballot is very misleading to the public who's gonna come in and just read the ballot and try to make a decision. Is it a debt exclusion? Is it an override? There is no identification on this ballot to either one. None. This ballot meets the minimum standards at best, if at all, to the Mass General Laws of what it has to do, at best if it does. Listen, I'm not the smartest guy in the room. I'm not even the smartest guy in my household, okay? But when I read this, okay, and I've been to the informational meetings, I don't understand it. I don't understand it. I don't understand if it's a debt exclusion. I don't understand if it's a two and a half override. And I shouldn't have to rely on the Webster Times or cable news for that to be known.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. So, we had a post on our Facebook page today in response to another post that brought up a very similar question. The person who reposted on the Facebook page actually contacted the Secretary of State's Office Elections Division, and the response from the Elections Division was, "Thank you for contacting us. The text of Prop two and a half questions is dictated by state law, and the language of the question varies depending on the type of question. The law does not require or allow the question to be labeled as an underwrite, override, or debt exclusion, as state law requires that ballot questions be labeled only as question one, question two, et cetera. The format of a levy limit override question as required by subsection G of section 21(c) of chapter 59 of the general laws is, shall the city town of blank be allowed to assess an additional blank in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of state purpose for the fiscal year beginning July 1st?" And in this case, it's 2023. That's verbatim from the Elections Division, and that's verbatim how our question reads, and that received legal review.
Thank you. All right. Next agenda item? Mr. Raymond?
I believe Mr. Ruder just responded to some of my questions, so I'd like to respond back. Like I said, you met the minimum standards of the state, okay? Is it fair to the taxpayers of Dudley and the residents of Dudley not to know exactly what they're voting for? And what's the best way to do it? The ballot, I believe, is very misleading. You plugged in numbers off some draft language taken from the state, and there's nothing to make any indication to whether it's a two and a half override or a debt exclusion. And there's tremendous difference between the two. One of it is a permanent tax levy, the other is a temporary tax levy, and they don't know what they're voting for. As a matter of fact, when it reads for one fiscal year, that leads to believe, maybe I'm assuming it's a debt exclusion and not an override, because it says the fiscal year 2023. It only says 2023. This is a continue, the two and a half override is forevermore. That money is gonna continue on and just keep going. No one's saying that the town doesn't need money. No one's saying that the school doesn't need money. I think in the informational meetings, it came through loud and clear, okay, that the difference between the tax levy of a two and a half override or debt exclusion was a product of what the money was needed for. And there's two major capital projects gonna be needed for the school, which could go to a debt exclusion without any problem at all, and you'd probably get the money without controversy. But to put everything into an override on a permanent tax levy, so the school can have a slush fund sitting on the side, or that's gonna require a two-thirds meeting, two-thirds vote at a town meeting, when the town meeting already knows the money's already there, they're gonna really say no? Of course not. You know it as well as I do. So, that's a concern. We're gonna be funding money and putting money on the side so they can go forward and dip into this well anytime they need to, as long as the money's sitting there. I don't think it's a very wise thing, but my main concern is the way this is drafted. It meets the minimum standards under the law.
Mr. Chairman? And I appreciate your concern, Mr. Raymond. That's not lost on any of us up here, but there is no discretion in terms of the way this is written. Again, this is not from me. It's not from a member of the Board of Selectment. It's not from the school committee. This is from the Elections Division. The format of a levy limit override question as required by subsection G of section 21(c) of chapter 59 of the general laws is, and it's exactly the way it's been formatted. Further, again, just to be very clear on it, the law does not require or allow, this wasn't up to me, this wasn't up to town council, this wasn't up to this board or the school committee. The law does not require or allow the question to be labeled as an underwrite, override, or debt exclusion. It's not the minimum standard. It is the only standard, and that's what we've applied here.
You know, Mr. Chair, too, again, not to be lost in the shuffle, if we could have paid him $250 an hour to come here and say it for us, our town council reviewed it, okayed the language. And I appreciate, you know, the kind words Mr. Raymond included in what he said. It didn't fall on us, as Mr. Ruder just said. That's the way it is. That's the way it has to be. And again, town council would come and sit in that seat like he does, and Attorney Blake is a wonderful gentleman, but I don't need, nor should anybody here need or want him to come in to read what Mr. Ruder just read for $250 an hour. And I'm not saying anybody's asking for that, but that would be the ultimate solution, and phrasing it carefully, nobody's accusing us of not, I don't think, doing more or doing better. We're doing what's required, the only thing that's required under the law, reviewed by our town council. This was not John Marcy and Steve Sullivan figured this out on Sunday afternoon. This was vetted, written, and approved by attorney, well, maybe it was Attorney Blake or someone from his firm, so, again, the perception is not, bottom line, the perception is not the reality in this situation.
Mr. Marcy.
Just one quick question.
Mr. Marcy, I just recognized Mr. Marcy, Mr. Raymond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just to build on that a little bit, you know, we put the stuff out. At the end of the day, some people are gonna be for it or against it. Understand? I get that. If you're against it, vote no. And I think in my time up here is, people are pretty, are smarter. The people, Dudley voters are pretty smart, and they know. And if they, and they find, at the end of the day, if they figure out that, you know what, this is too much, or this is something, they'll vote no. I'm confident of that. But if they see the plan, the five-year plan that the school has put together, and we, as we always do, let the voters decide, then they'll vote yes. But I don't, to say that people are gonna show up and be like uninformed about that, I don't think that's the case, Mr. Raymond, respectfully.
Mr. Raymond. And then I'm gonna have to go to somebody else.
I don't often agree with you, but I do on that statement, okay? The only thing, the only question I have, I've been, I got the Mass General Laws in front of me as it relates to, and the exact language and how you did the ballot and the whole nine yards, you plugged the numbers in and the whole nine yards, and that's why I said it meets the minimum standards. I can't find in here, and if somebody could please point it out to me, where you're forbidden from doing what our concerns are. You don't have to, but I don't see where you're not allowed to, and I've heard, and so if somebody could point that out to me, I'd appreciate it, because Mr. Ruder's already said twice that they weren't allowed to, okay? I don't see where you're not allowed to.
I can read for the third time what the Secretary of State's Office opinion was.
No, I don't think we have to.
Hello, Kathy Hurst, Camelot Circle. I just want to point out that I've been on that Department of Local Services and read that over and over again. I also have taken screenshots of other ballots throughout the state, and they're either at the top, and like in a banner form across, it says Proposition Two and a Half, override, vote. Or it is written, sometimes I had a hard time finding it because it was written out in words, not in numerals, so it said Proposition Two, T-W-O, and so on, but it was always in there. And, I mean, recent ones up till 2020, 2021, 2022, and this is from a law group from, about the laws in Massachusetts. And it does say that, it says right here, "To avoid running afoul, the description inserted in the question must be a funding purpose." It's supposed to, I think that's where the problem is, is because you're taking a capital expenditure such as the roof replacement and a feasibility study, and you're lumping them into what's called an operational budget on your ballot. We know those things are not operational, they're capital expenses, so that's a problem, too. Thank you.
Sir?
My name's Mark Maleski, Kennedy Drive, Dudley, Mass. I was employed from the Town of Dudley. I worked at the Dudley Recycling Center since 2019. I worked there with a partner.
Can I stop you for one second? If this is about a personnel action, I don't think we can discuss this in open session without, I'd like to talk to council.
That's not an agenda item. Not an agenda item. This is board and citizens' comments. If it's a personnel issue.
I'm sorry?
I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying if it's a personnel issue, it's not an agenda item anyway. Probably not germane right now. I'm agreeing with you.
Okay. Can we, can we talk after the meeting, and we'll have a discussion on how to handle this? Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? All right, hearing none. Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll probably refocus some of my report tonight, but I'll hit some of the other points. Board of Selectmen will be holding a public hearing on Monday, May 8th, at 6:35 p.m. in this room for the purpose of accepting the layout for a portion of Partridge Hill Road, and as the board remembers, that was part of a betterment, our first success story with the betterments from last year. A copy of the acceptance plan is available for inspection in the town clerk's office. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the date and time specified, which again is March 8th at 6:30, I'm sorry, May 8th at 6:35 p.m., right here in this room. Dan Colella, President of Dudley Little League, has extended an invitation to the 2023 Dudley Little League Parade Day to this board, so any members of this board that would like to participate in that. As you recall, it's an annual tradition. It helps kick off the Little League season with a celebration at Crawford Field. It's gonna be held on Saturday, May 6th, with the rain date of May 13th. It's gonna leave the town hall promptly at noon and proceed to Crawford Field, and once there, they'll begin the traditional opening ceremonies, where Mr. Marcy will be tapped to throw up the opening pitch, as he's done so well in the past.
I think they usually have an award winner to throw it to you.
Yeah, that's correct. In the OneDrive, Mr. Chairman, is some onboarding SOP. I placed a copy of it. Of course, you know, SOP is standard operating procedure, and it's in there for the board's awareness. As it is an SOP and not a policy, I'm seeking an approving, I'm not seeking an approving vote from the Board of Selectmen, but I wanted to make sure you were able to see it before I rolled it out at the managers' meeting this week. It's, again, onboarding is one of these procedures that we've been anxiously trying to get codified before July 1st. We'd want to extend an offer to a prospective employee and get the new employee to work, and it's contingent upon a whole bunch of internal policies that need to be satisfied first, so we've kind of hopefully streamlined that a little bit to move new hires forward without any delays in in causing any operational issues with departments and getting new person to work. If the board needs any clarification on that, please let me know. And then, Mr. Chairman, as we've already begun discussing here tonight, the override vote is tomorrow. Over the course of the last eight weeks since January, beginning with the initial public hearing with the FAA and the joint meeting with the school committee on January 25th, we've saturated residents with information on that vote in the Webster Times, on cable access, on the website, on our electronic signs, signs within the town hall, on social media outlets, at Board of Selectmen meetings right along, during citizen comments, as we saw here tonight, and it's been a very polarizing period for us. It's an active campaign against the override. There's an active campaign to vote yes in support of the question. And tomorrow is voting day, and voters will decide what level of services will be provided by local government, not just public safety, public health, highway, et cetera, but also the level and quality of the educational programs that our district will be able to deliver to our kids. That will all be decided tomorrow. Those who have strongly supported the override, including me, have been accused of using scare tactics to drive a yes vote. I'm here to say that publicly, one time, you know, between now and when the polls open tomorrow morning, that anyone says that, I mean, essentially kidding themselves. In the four years that I've been town administrator, I can honestly say that we have never operated on this board without a plan, and the override question is no exception. There is a plan now before voters to fund local government through the next five years inclusive of the school assessment, including the capital request, which incidentally, the vote is approved on September of '22, and a plan to raise taxes to a level that covers projected cost increases for municipal government and provides a mechanism for the town meeting to save an educational stabilization account for the projected cost increases to the district assessment for the next five years. As I mentioned, a plan was required, and a plan was presented to the voters. I think that it's a plan that is transparent, and it's honest with the voters. It's not hiding or providing a false narrative that cost increases to maintain services at required levels are the reality of what expenses we need as a community into the near future. There's been a lot of discussion, for example, about separating the capital request into a separate capital debt exclusion vote, so the voters can make a decision as to whether or not to vote to pay for operational expenses, as well as to pay for the capital costs that they've already voted to incur in September of '22. So I want to be very clear that it's a decision point for anyone who votes tomorrow, and the fact of the matter is that the vote to incur those expenses has already been taken by the voters in September of 2022. The mechanism to pay for that September of '22 affirmative vote to incur those costs was not decided, but that in no way means that we don't have to pay the bill now. When the bill comes, we will have to pay it. And that is why the decision was made to include that amount as part of the override. And I've understood that some who strongly oppose the override simply want to have the ability to vote on the override separately from the capital costs, and I don't necessarily oppose an affirmative vote on either. I get that. However, it should be noted that as much as the town and the school committee is proposing to make deposits into an educational stabilization account in 2025 and '26, the current plan that everyone's voting on tomorrow calls for the application, meaning the withdrawal, of $350,000 from that same educational stabilization account in FY20- account in FY twenty-seven, and a withdrawal of 1.1 million in FY twenty-eight and forward to prevent the need for another override discussion in two years from now and through 2028. So it's a plan we presented, and it's a plan that people are going to vote on tomorrow. So in the future, a menu vote, meaning that it's capital, it's a capital exclusion versus an operational override, it comes with a very big risk. If the choice were a vote that separated the combined operational override for the schools and the town from the capital costs and provided for a capital exclusion vote separately, the risk is that the town voted to incur the cost in September of twenty-two, and it may not be able to pay those costs. If the capital exclusion operational vote were to fail, and an operational override were to pass, the operational override money would not be available in its entirety to main, to maintain services, municipal or otherwise. And we would necessarily need to still impose cuts to pay for that September twenty-two vote to fund the capital. So that's why we came up with the plan, and a plan to put the money aside, and a plan to apply it in years twenty-seven, in FY twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then conversely, if the, if the capital debt exclusion were to pass, and the combined operational override were to fail, we would be able to pay for the September vote by taxpayers to incur the capital costs for the schools. But we would still be in the same situation with the same level of cuts that we're talking about may or may not happen tomorrow. So finally, I've heard that people may be willing to vote for some things. If, if we provided a vote that further created the false narrative of a menu, where municipal operational override would be separated from a school operational override, and a school capital exclusion vote, that would, in my opinion, be disastrous, where maybe the town operational vote would be supported, and maybe the capital debt exclusion, but perhaps not the school override vote would pass, or some other untenable combination of yes and no votes. That would be the absolute worst outcome, where we may be looking at a past operational override for the town side of the budget, and the capital exclusion, and perhaps a failed operational override for the schools. That would put us, of course, right back to where we were in 2020 and 2021, where it became necessary to subsidize the minimal school assessment from other sources of funding, like the OPERA money, which was federal money that was given to the towns who realized a loss in revenue during the COVID pandemic, and CARE Act money. And only in that scenario, we would not have any federal funds to rely on. So, so anything that we got because of COVID, that we were able to use to prop up our budget for the last two years, would be gone. So we would be right back to where we are tonight. We still have to pay for the, for the school assessment. We still have to pay for the capital debt. So a menu vote comes with its own set of risks, is what I'm getting at. So what is before voters tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, is a decisive plan that requires voters to pass a one-question override vote that will adequately fund town government, which includes our obligations to fund education through the year 2028. In my view, it's transparent. It provides a plan that is managed through, through 2028, not by me or the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, but by the town meeting voters, the, the people who are registered to vote and live in the community. That money is reserved from the override through the Educational Stabilization Fund through the year 2028. And we're having some technical difficulties with the screen here tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I was going to put up those charts that show what the override, well, the screen behind me, there's definitely a technical problem with the one behind you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to put the charts back up. But we've seen these charts, again, in the newspaper. We've seen these charts online, on social media, on Mr. Siggen Everidge's phone, and elsewhere for almost two months now. The bottom line is, um, without the override passing, people say, okay, I've heard feedback where, where, you and I talked about it earlier, Mr. Chairman, where people were coming back and saying, well, at least Charlton held the line. They're only giving 1.9 million. And the school asked for 2.2. Well, they didn't hold the line. They, they, I, the, the point is, they're giving a 1.9 million dollar increase on their side of the assessment and writing a check to do it. And that's simple. It's, there's a 17 million dollar difference between today's level budget and Dudley and Charlton. Charlton has a budget, and of all of our bordering towns, it's the next lowest, closest to Dudley. Charlton's budget is 17 million dollars more than what Dudley's budget is. They can afford to write the check. They're not saying no. They're saying, here's 1.9 million dollars over last year's assessment. Where Dudley's budget is 25 million dollars, if the override passes in FY twenty-four, Charlton's budget, and, and it, the next lowest town of all of our bordering towns, Charlton's budget is 38 million dollars right now. That's a 17 million dollar difference, and it's a 13 million dollar gap if the override passes. So no one is asking to bring us up. Everybody recognizes, and everybody knows, and doesn't need to hear me go on about the industrial and commercial tax base difference. It's been brought up to me. It's been pointed out to every member of this board, I'm sure. Look at, well, it's not a fair comparison. Charlton has Route 20, and they have all this in industrial and commercial. Yes, they do. They have 17 million dollars more than Dudley has to work with. So we're not asking to be brought up to Charlton levels, or Exford levels, or Webster levels, or Southbridge levels. We're asking for the minimum amount needed to get us through for the next five years. And that minimum amount brings our tax rate up to right in between two, of all four bordering towns, right in the middle. It brings us to 25 million dollars if it passes, with the next lowest town being 38 million dollars this year. Thirteen million dollars more than, 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 at today's current levels is the difference between us and the next lowest town. We're not asking for the, for the world. We're not asking for greedy amounts of money so that we can, we can lavish all kinds of niceties on everyone. This is just to meet the minimum amount required for the next five years, without any issues to pay for the capital debt that the town voted to support, and the operational increases, increases to both the municipal side and the school assessment side. So I hope, Mr. Chairman, that people who vote tomorrow keep that in mind when they, when they make their final decision. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at any time.
Anything from the board?
Just a comment. If I heard Mr. Ruder right, and I know I did, the, if the override was successful, it slots us third out of the five towns. And the reason why we use those towns, they were contiguous. We share a school system. We share a dispatch center. We essentially share a hospital. So we didn't, we didn't cherry pick towns to fit any kind of narrative. But the bottom line, the numbers that Mr. Ruder just quoted and paraphrased are based on those other four towns this year's numbers. If you assume a two and a half percent increase in the other four towns, we'll, we'll be where we need to be to, just to continue providing the bare services, we'll slide back even further, because their increases haven't even been taken into consideration yet, and the numbers Mr. Ruder gave are projected if the override passes. So I think that's important to, to consider. And again, as Mr. Marcy said, I've trusted the voters for over 20 years. I've been one for longer than that. They're going to make an educated guess, based on their own set of circumstances or on the, the entirety of the question. I think we've done what we can, and Mr. Ruder has been more than transparent and open, finance board, the school committee. The numbers don't lie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything from the board? Motion to accept the Town Administrators' report?
So may.
Any discussion? Licenses, permits. Nichols College requests for an outdoor entertainment license for Friday, May fifth, 2023, from seven to 11 P M. On Shamy Lawn for live band.
Hi, Heather Bowes, Eighteen Mill Street. The date is actually for Wednesday, May third, next week.
Correct on that here, Mr. Chairman. All right, it's correct on the, uh.
Um, the, it's the last couple nights of, for the seniors, they're having a band, Derek and the Fun Bags. It's something they've done for, I don't know, quite a few years now, other than COVID years. We have asked for a police detail that night. Public safety will be there.
Thank you.
Seven to eight is them just basically warming up and sound checking. Eight to eleven would be the time of the concert.
Any questions?
Right, just one, Mr. Chair. Is everybody on this board okay with live entertainment at 11 o'clock on a weeknight?
I thought it was usually 10. Is that?
We have asked them to roll back before. I mean, that's a Wednesday night. I understand 90% of it is, 99% of our, we use Nichols, but there are residents up there. In my opinion, I think 11, I mean, a band wouldn't play until 10:59, 59, I don't think. But I think 11 o'clock on a Wednesday night is probably later than I would like if I lived up there.
This is what we've been doing for the past quite a few years. And I know that they shut down right on time. And it's to the back. I mean, I know it would still border, obviously, the people behind them, but it is to the back, or it's not right out front.
It's my piece, Mr. Chair. I'll put it in the form of a motion if you'd like, amend the request or amend the approval to end at 10.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second that. May I?
Discussion?
Is public safety all set with this?
Uh, yes, I've had talks with the Miss Collins last week, and they hired a police detail for that night.
No, no fire, any MS detail?
All right, we're okay. Mr. Marcy? Your motion is, is what?
Ask, they can stay out there till 11, but ask the, the band to stop at 10. Or the, out, music entertainment, a band, whatever it may be. I mean, they could still be on the lawn. I'm not saying shut the whole function down at 10. I'm just saying shut down the.
The live music. Mr. Marcy? Through the chair, Heather, what, when is, how far has the band gone in the past?
They've gone to 11 in the past. I mean, I can tell you, if we've already looked at the weather, it looks like it's going to be in the low 50s next week. I don't think they're honestly going to be there, like raging all night by any means. I don't know if anybody saw the concert this past weekend that they had in the Athletic Center, but it was really quite tame. All their activities all weekend were quite tame.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
I can tell you, they've already paid for the band to have it that amount of time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. So it's, so it's for one, modify it till 10 P M. Band till, a band or entertainment till 10 P M.
Music into, live entertainment. I mean, I want to see them go from a band to a DJ just to, for example, not that they would, not saying, just the Bowes are going to go back and say, close the van and start the DJ up. Musical entertainment.
All right, for one.
You amend that?
Oh, yeah, just have to reprint it and come back in and sign it. I think it's got, how do I know that works?
I can reprint that. All right, reprint that and get it right to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. We're going to start this public hearing at 7:15. It's a poll hearing, hearing for National Grid. Anyone here from National Grid?
I think you just have to read the notice, Mr. Chair.
Yep, I'll read it. Plan number 30700647. Intervall Circle, National Grid, to install new underground construction, one three-inch conduit encased in concrete with new primary cable on Intervale Circle from existing transformer pad 3135-4 to existing primary pull box PB-1 spanning 200, 250 feet.
Yes, so there is a new service going in.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Is that better?
No, can you identify yourself?
Oh, my name is Will Fontaine. I don't live in Dudley. Office that I work out of is 939 Southbridge Street in Worcester. And there's a new service going in in this area. And that's why, that's why we need these new underground facilities.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, new service, you mean to a new construction or new?
Um, I'm not entirely sure. The, I'm not the designer who worked on it. I'm not sure if it's new construction or if it's an old building being, you know, redone for a new business or house. But it, to us, it's a new service, so.
So to the superintendent, Mr. Chair, does it involve damage to the roadway or is it within the taking? Does it go across the road?
I have not seen any plans on it. Oh, good.
The plan's in a packet. All right, I see a plan.
It's in a packet.
It's in the packet. Yeah, no, I know, that's.
Poll hearing. Just the notice.
You have to see, there we go. Usually, usually include a schematic.
Yeah, I don't see any details.
No, the game is very limited.
No. Usually we have a sketch, drawing.
This is more of a, this is from the butter on the, the, the.
Can I have a cut?
This might do it, though.
Is that, is that from us or from?
From National Grid. The other ones from us. I colored one.
So it appears, does that, oh, you see, it does that. It appears to me that means underground, right?
Yeah.
In the roadway?
So the service is underground until it gets to that point?
Yeah, yes, yes. I would imagine, obviously, it's within the, the right-of-way of the town in the roadway. It's not.
No, it's a private way. I'd like to see.
Uh, sir, you want to come up and, yeah, introduce yourself and we can.
Yeah, my name is Russ Pullen. I live at one Intervale Circle. And the, the conduits that he's proposing to be installed are already installed. I'm wondering if they're going to reinstall them and put them in the road, because this is a private way, and it's a paved road. It's not unmaintained from the town. I pay for all the plowing and everything on that property. So if there's going to be any construction going in the road, I, I need to see a detailed plan on this. Apparently, he didn't come up here with anything except for thinking that there's a new service going up there. There's three houses already there with service. There's a new service going across on five Intervale Circle, which doesn't even, it cuts across Intervale Road. You know, I don't, and that, 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 that property doesn't even have a permit on it. Hasn't been, hasn't been approved. It's approved for a building lot, but there's no building going up there. And if they're going to tear the road off, I need to know that this is going to be repaired properly, and especially if they're going to put a new conduit in front of my property, where the original one goes across my front lawn, not in the road. You guys really need to set up a meeting with an engineer and figure out what you're doing.
Sir, how about this? We'll see if you can answer any of the questions.
Sure.
And then we'll take it from there, okay?
I do have concerns on this.
Understood. Thank you.
As I said, I'm, I'm not the engineer who worked on this project. I do, I can have him contact you. I don't have all the details. He'll know it a lot better than I do. So if I can take down your number and anybody else who has any questions, and I can pass them along to him, and he can, we, we can do this again. I'm not sure typically if it's a private way. All we would need is a, an easement from the owner of the private way, not a petition. So I'm not sure exactly why we would have set up this petition if it was privately owned. So, but that's something I, it's like an ask the designer. So, but that's something I, it's like I can ask the designer.
So could we possibly get the questions, get maybe it back on the agenda with, and have that discussion?
I think, Mr. Chair, we give this gentleman some direction. I would, I would like to see us continue the public hearing and at a minimum, provide more detail and have to meet with the highway superintendent, whether it's private or not. Could be, some of this isn't private. It could be damaging town. And to the gentleman's point, we had a fill of private roads around here. We do have an opinion somewhere in the absence of an owner of the road, the people that have frontage on the road technically own to the middle of the road. So if they're in front of this gentleman's house, for example, unless somebody else owns that road is of owner of record, this gentleman by right would own, took the big point of the road. So I can see his concern if they're gonna be digging it up. Well, it's the chairman's, chairman's discretion, but I'm just trying to, I think we, in a minute, we need to continue this thing for a lot of information.
Look, if you got something else to say, otherwise, what we're gonna do is probably see if we can continue this and get that information you're looking for.
Yeah, I just wanna give you a little history. I just wanna give you a little history on this. When I, when I put my house on, one Intervale Circle, that used to be, used to be Sales Way. And I sat in a hearing in, back in two thousand and five with Adele, your old building inspector, and she made me, she made us change that to a private way because there was an additional house added when it wasn't supposed to be. They got, they got approved through the planning board. And she was trying to, she was trying to shut the builder down. He was already, he already had the house built after me. So she made it a, she made us make it a private way and an unmaintained road from the town. Back in two thousand, two thousand and four, two thousand and five. You know, I'm, I'm concerned about the road. If they're gonna tear up the road, that it's repaired the way, the way it is now, because it's a good road. It's got curbing and everything. I don't wanna have to deal with a road being torn up and having, having it be in dis, in dismay and me having to have additional costs to make that road up to power again. So I, I really think we need another hearing with some details.
That's fair. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
What's the board's pleasure?
Well, this gentleman, I'll say.
No, I have a question.
Sure, sure. Come on up and introduce yourself and.
Yeah, my name is Bob Marriott. I have property on, on Intervale and, well, not actually Intervale. It's, yeah, it is Intervale Way. And all I wanna know is that there's power, there's a, a line that goes across my property. Well, in front of my property, right near the road, doesn't go in the road, but it's, it's adjacent to the road. There's, there's lines there and everything. And all I wanna know from these people is if they're adding in things. I just wanna be able to have access to power to my property if they could put a box in or something that I can, you know, connect to for power. That's all I'm asking. As far as the road, I, I don't know why they would have to go and chop up the road, be honest with you. Because there are lines right on the ground, you know, off the road, right in front of it, you know, right next to the road. So, I mean, I don't know why they're doing it this way, but kinda surprised me a little bit to see that they were starting cutting up the road, you know? But there's, there's lines in there. I don't know if they can, you know, resurrect those lines and do something different with them. I mean, it would just be a matter of digging on the side of the road as opposed to chopping up the road. So I'd like to be able to come to the next meeting if somebody could notify me when that will be.
Well, I think this, we're trying to figure out how best to proceed.
We haven't made.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
You don't have any answers to that, right?
So even, just to clarify, I think what, when I say that, you know, that this digging would happen in the public way, I'm not necessarily saying the road. I'm, I, that, cause that includes, you know, like, as you say, it's not in the actual road. It's, it's just within the right-of-way of the road, so it's, but, but like I said, I don't have all the details as far as why we're doing the conduit, that conduit. The existing conduit might be damaged. Or there, you know, there might be some other issues or they might need a different-sized wire, you know, different, different things like that, that there might be issues for. But again, any, anybody who has any concerns or questions, I can take your information and we can get, I, you know, I can get a list together. I can contact the designer and get those questions answered. And then as far as you wanting a, some sort of thing, we need to have to contact customer services for something like.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, if they're gonna do the construction, I just wanna know if they're gonna put something in place that something can be attached to. My daughter has a property right next to it, and she couldn't attach it. She had to go down the road and just get, um, you could get out of it. So, you know, I just wanna know if they're gonna reconstruct this and are they gonna make provisions for, for us, anyone to get power? That's great. I mean, if, yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to see, I'd have to see all, all the plans and everything to, to make that determination.
So it sounds like we need more information, so we'll, you can exchange information, you know, after the meeting, but.
Well, there, there would be another public hearing, but in it, like, we can correspond with you privately. Private, I can get either your phone number or your email and we can correspond with you privately. There would have to be another hearing for this to be approved anyway, so we could do both.
All right, thank you. Mr. Marcy.
Got it.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
I would like to see the board.
Do we have to close the meeting?
No, no, you can't close it. I wanna continue. If you close, you can start over.
Okay.
I would like to see the, the public hearing be continued to our next available meeting date, provided National Grid brings forward sufficient information to allow that hearing to continue.
That would be May eighth, Mr. Chairman.
And at a minimum, the schematic, this drawing, it looks, looks like they're in the road. I understand what the rep was saying about within the taking, which is a little more complicated to get into right now. But we need more information at a minimum. They, they need to speak with the highway superintendent to make sure they're not damaging town property. So continue to our next available meeting, provided National Grid gives us sufficient information in order to continue.
Got a second?
No, you can't vote on a hearing. The chairman can just declare the continuation.
I'll declare it again?
Yeah. Continue to May eighth.
All right, so take your motion away?
No, well, it's my motion, but to your discretion to grant the continuance.
No vote in the open hearing, so we'll just, the chair can just say, continue till May eighth.
All right, we'll continue this till May eighth.
Same time, six thirty.
Perfect. We'll, uh,
Six thirty-five PM.
What's the proper term?
Continue a public hearing.
We'll just continue.
So we'll continue this, uh, May eighth. So it's seven twenty-nine. And we'll move on to the next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right, new business. School Building Committee, Dudley Representatives, Dan Edmiston and Stephen Lepper, update report on findings. Gentlemen, like to come up, introduce yourselves and if it's more comfortable to come up front.
We'll sit.
They both get a mic. We got four of them.
Get a chair, it almost works, Dan.
Wasn't me. Dan Edmiston, School Building Committee, Seven Piesto Road.
Steve Lepper, Dresser Hill Road.
So since December, the school building committee has met three times. The first time was a virtual meeting. We all met just to organize a board, pretty much. Come up with chairman, vice chairman, et cetera. Our second meeting was in either late January or early February. And we spoke about the task at hand, what we were going to be doing over the next years, and then we were able to take a tour of the school. We basically started at one end and ended the other end and came up with about four pages of deficiencies, things that were noted that were, you know, either out of date or obsolete. And our third meeting was, I think it was in mid-March, early March, and then we talked about the feasibility study. You know, what the MSBA program is about, what the first steps are gonna be and amount of money that we'd like to see funded, so, approved, so we could fund the feasibility report. Even though there's four pages of, of items that we kinda noted during the walkthrough, I kinda picked out like eight or ten that I wouldn't mind if you, with the board's pleasure.
Absolutely.
Read away. Just to kinda give everybody an idea of what we're up against with the, with the school. The main portion of the building isn't protected by a sprinkler system. The building is outfitted with heat detectors. Their nurse, nurse's office is extremely cramped. There isn't enough space to bring in a stretcher or wheelchair. Rest spaces for six students are small and limited and lack privacy. Again, there isn't space in which the nurse team can speak with students confidentially.
Excuse me. Thank you.
So these aren't really in order. They're in order of how we walk through the building, so some of them are gonna be about the building, some about the spaces itself and some about infrastructure. But again, it's just an idea of what we're up against. The electrical panels were all manufactured by Federal Pacific, which has been defunct for quite some time, decades. Spare parts are no longer manufactured for Federal Pacific equipment, which forces staff to browse secondary markets to try to find replacement parts. We're talking like eBay, et cetera. The school's heating system is hot water radiator. The radiators in the classrooms are controlled by an obsolete pneumatic tube system that constantly fails and leaks. They also don't allow for the introduction of any fresh air into the building. The lighting system throughout the school has to be switched manually. There aren't any occupancy, occupancy sensors or other power-saving features, no LED lighting. The roof of the building is twenty-seven years old and leaks. The student body is nine hundred and forty strong. The gym only seats six hundred and eighty students at capacity. The cafeteria is the one space in the school that is large enough for the student body, but the school has to run four lunch periods. The auditorium doesn't have a functioning audio or AV system. The school has to rent systems for all functions. And then lastly, at the end of our walkthrough, it was noted that the school has been, is characterized as a twentieth-century building in which twenty-first century programs are being conducted. So in closing, you know, my son is a freshman at the school right now and as a parent, as a believer in education, it's important for me to see that this, the school, he's getting the best, and all of his classmates are getting the best education possible. I saw lots of examples of school staff doing an excellent job with limited spaces, limited resources, especially storage, for example. The amount of shelving they were able to cram into some areas is just remarkable. But I, I'm was really glad to have the chance to walk through and to see what we're up against. And also, I'm really happy to be sitting on the committee just to try to give students in the next forty, forty-five years, you know, my, my son's not gonna be able to see any kind of improvements that we hopefully will achieve, but students in the next forty, forty-five years, I'm hoping they'll be able to.
Thank you. Board?
Mr. Mas.
Yeah, guys, thanks for that report. That's definitely eye-opening. Every time I go there, I'm always amazed at what the, the more with less definitely rings true at, at, at that school, which my daughter's a sophomore, so I understand. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Sullivan.
I wanna thank Dan and Steve for volunteering to be on this committee and thank the school for open dialogue with this committee. We all, all, all appear, either went to school there, had children that went to school there, and some of us both. And it's, it's a constant amazement, as Mr. Edmond said, you know, what, what the, what the staff does with what they have to work with. You know, my, my youngest has been out four years now, but my other ones are bigger than that. I mean, they're over ten years out. I guarantee you, if they went in there, some things haven't changed. Some things have been modified. But yeah, it's, it's at the point where you can't just keep putting, quote the famous, lipstick on a pig. There's gotta, something has to be done. But I wanna thank everyone.
Mr. Chair, I too would like to thank these gentlemen for all that great, hard work. And to Mr. Marcy, the more with less, I think at this point, it's just not cutting the mustard anymore with all those deficiencies. I don't want any child to be going through that. And it, it just makes the strain more on faculty and everybody trying to do more with less. When you get to the point where you can't, and I think that's where we're coming right now, because you're not gonna even meet compliance needs. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you both for doing the work, being, actually being there and looking. I haven't been there and gone through it in some time, but it's good for people to know. Thank you.
Thank you for doing this, this work. The one ask I, I would have, and I'd ask anyone that's involved in any kind of capital expense review or investigation is, you know, it's safety first. And then always decide what it wants and what it needs.
And, Mr. Chairman, can I add to that? Also, in the, in the, one of the themes of today is transparency and really putting it out there, your findings, your board's, this, this group's findings, the committee. Let's put it out there, just so people can see what, what you guys saw and so they can read it, too.
All right, put on the school website.
Yep, school website, our website, social media if we have to. Just get the information out there. Thanks.
Awesome.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you.
Great job.
Dudley Grange, one sixty-three. Parking waiver Thursday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from eight AM to eight PM for the Grange Annual Strawberry Festival. Anyone here from the Grange? It's board's pleasure.
Some. Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Discussion? Chief, chief, any issues with that?
No, we'll just continue what we did before.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next is open town meeting warrant effective April twenty-fourth at eight PM and close Friday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three at one PM.
One move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Just in time.
Old business, just in time. Highway Superintendent, update on Brainerd Road, Mill Race Bridge.
So the only update that I really have on the, the demolition for the bridge is the Conservation Commission is to be meeting this week to review the, the issues related to any, any conservation issues, obviously. And, you know, barring any, any issues with that, we should be ready to begin with the demolition work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, well, Mr. Murray's update, you wanna go to number, let us see.
So you wanna do your department?
Uh, no, no, let us see.
Oh, yeah. Well, while you're here, let's get you something else. Do appointment of Jeff Murray, provisional local building inspector, term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion?
Just wanna thank Jeff for outside the scope of his work to complete this coursework to get this license.
And a reminder of why we're doing this?
Mr. Chairman, we did this, well, there's, there's two things. The first one is more of a paperwork issue. We, we voted on this previously to make him provisional, sent it into the state, he got his information back. We hadn't, we had to take this vote again for procedural reasons. He hasn't served yet as air, as an inspector, so we just wanted to look Jeff in with our building inspector and make sure that that department was aware and the board was aware. And the board sanctions him working with the building inspector to be trained internally to take on some of these additional duties when and if required. Right now, the town pays a fee to a neighboring town when the building inspector is unavailable to go ahead and and do inspections for us and issue permits and so forth. Jeff came forward and showed the initiative and wanted to pursue this avenue and I told him that it seemed like a win-win for the, for the town and win-win for him. And so we'll have an in-house backup to our existing building commissioner and, and into the future, we'll have another direction to look in, should it become necessary.
All right, I prefer three D, but, you know, we'll start with two D, right? All right.
Anyone else want to, Mr. Chairman? That's the thing.
John, what do you think?
Right.
All right. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Jeff, you want to do your department head communication?
Sure, so basically, we're preparing for the new construction season. Again, we're anticipating a start in the very near future with the demolition on the Brandon Road Bridge. We're doing mowing and maintenance on the edges of the roadways. The crews have been placing mulch at some of the larger intersections to prevent weed growth or overgrowth of, on the edges of the roadway and intersections to improve visibility. And we've begun street sweeping. And we've realized a drastic difference in the street sweeping by using only the road salt instead of a sand salt mix. So it's given us an improved report that we can submit with our MS four later in the season, in the fall. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, old business, Paul Wheeler, update on Nancy's memorial on Hayden Pond Road.
Is it okay if I sit at the table?
Absolutely.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. After I was here the last time, Mr. Ruder requested that I come and give updates about this issue. And just to review a little bit, Nancy Makovic passed away last November. And Nancy was on many town committees and worked on organizations all over town. So she did more in a week than most people did in years. So we wanted to figure out a way to honor her. So we figured we'd dedicate the causeway on Hayden Pond Road to her. So the date of the dedication is going to be June third, Saturday, June third, at ten AM, with a ring date of June fourth at ten AM. So just to let you know that we're going to be putting up a sign saying the Nancy J. Makovic Causeway. It's going to be a sign similar to the other ones that are around town, black with gold lettering. And we're also going to have a bronze plaque, six-by-twelve-inch brown plaque that was generously donated by the citizen of the town. You know, we feel this should be a nice event. We have music. We have a person that's going to come and sing a couple of songs, and maybe even some orchestra music. Those details are yet to be worked out, so a lot of that depends on the weather. Nobody's going to want to play their guitar out in the rain or on a bad day. We also have some speakers. Representative Durant is coming to speak. So I'm asking one of your selectmen, I think it'd be nice if one of you, can I put somebody, one of you guys down to come and speak?
One of us will be there, absolutely.
Okay.
I told you, Paul, I'll see you there.
Yep.
Well, thank you.
June fourth, did I write that?
June third.
Sorry.
June third.
Ten, right?
Yep, ten.
Also, I'm here to ask that on that date, can we close the road there for about an hour? I don't know who that comes under, is that under the chief's purview or the selectmen's purview? Maybe from ten to eleven for an hour? Can we use like your sawhorses to block the road?
Yep.
Maybe have a cruiser up there.
Yeah.
All right, so you work with chief and highway?
Jeff? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize my voice was so loud. We'll work with public information too, so we get some photos and some advertisement for the dedication.
I've already spoke with Deb Laplaca. We're going to be doing a press release.
Great.
Probably in mid-May.
Perfect.
For this event. So that's all I got for now, unless anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Thank you for the update.
All right, I'll be back probably late May or something, one more time.
Fantastic.
All right.
Great job.
Thank you.
Some good news. Student reps not here. Departmental communication. Rich, you want to go first?
Mr. Chair, while Rich is coming up, the student rep is, had a late tennis match. That's, so we're aware that she was unable to attend.
Expecting wins.
Win last total?
That would be fine.
Obviously wish you luck. Plenty of skill, right? Good evening. Start with the good things. It's open enrollment now for the town of Dudley. That's a good thing. Again, we're buying our health insurance through the trust. This is the first year we're having an increase over the last few years. Remember, we're cannibalizing part of the principal. The capitalization for the trust was as high as five months. And over the last, five months run out, and over the last two years, they've brought that down to what is supposed to be a three-month run out. In other words, three months' worth of bills are sitting in an account earning interest. So on top of the operation and everything else. I always think that ratio is sort of interesting. On the flip side, all of the employees, now is the time to make your changes. You don't need to wait until marriage, divorce, divorce, loss of spouse's coverage, anything like that. Now's the time for you to go through and make those changes. As far as the dental goes, no change for dental. You can opt in and opt out for those items. As far as taxes go, second floor's been busy last two weeks. Again, I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to everybody in the town hall for making sure that all of the bills that went into a reused envelope or something like that made it to our office. Always crossing with the town clerk, assessors, things like that, so thank you. Appreciate everybody's patience. All of the first round of excise are out. The second round of excises are going to be out, are out and due today. We want to take care of them. General message, if you had a motor vehicle in Massachusetts and it's registered and you received a bill, it needs to get paid or abated. We're starting to get those phone calls from people who are no longer Dudley residents. What a shame. Water bills will be going out for next week, May first, everybody's favorite time. That's the fourth and final installment of real estate taxes that are coming out. So I'm sure some people who are voting tomorrow will stop by the counter and make their payment if they don't already have their taxes. Escrowed, second round of late bills went out. All of the unpaid for the previous fiscal year. Little different approach for this year. Instead of advertising them immediately, we've done a little bit of legwork, locating the current owner and sending out sort of that additional letter. It's not required, but it's one of those things that our tax title attorney always appreciates. The idea that it's a tap on the shoulder that perhaps someone up here may owe something. And it's better to know now than having to read it in the newspaper. On that, I thank everybody for their time, and good evening.
You want to do the schools, the next, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we'll recognize the chairman of the school department or superintendent LaMash. Looking to see, they were looking at each other, pick who's going.
All right, gentlemen, I didn't know that I was going to skip in front of your reports this evening. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the board of selectmen. I want to start by saying I should have listened to Kathy on the tenth of April, because I submitted an op-ed that didn't get published. So it will come out after tomorrow's vote. It happened to me as well. I didn't realize what's the time. Publishers early this past week. They came out on a Wednesday versus a Thursday. So my op-ed will be post tomorrow's ballot, but it may actually have some value. Because as we need to understand, this is a two-step process. Tomorrow isn't the last step. Requires town meeting to approve this as well. You know, this isn't meant to be an easy decision, an easy process. This is a lengthy process, which is why we've invested over a year to try to come up with a plan that could work for the Dudley Child Regional School District, but also for the community of Dudley. Now, this evening, I could certainly sit here and share, like, once again, the $2.7 million reductions, what that's going to impact, $3.6 million in increased fixed costs. But I want to try to narrow it down a little bit more and be very clear. Our focus from the get-go and for future years has always been level service. Nothing more. Level service. How do we maintain a level service operating budget for the school district? And at the same time, we have this envelope of the feasibility study for Shepherd Hill Regional High School, which took fourteen years to get to this step. Fourteen years to get to a $463,000 for the town of Dudley feasibility study for Shepherd Hill Regional High School. That's a lot of years of applying for it and finally getting into that grant system. And then at the same time, the town voters approved a roof at Dudley Middle School, which I hope after the April tenth meeting, people took a walk around the building. If they haven't, they can still call for an appointment and look at the building and look at the spider web of tubes and wires and buckets and everything else at Dudley Middle School and why that roof needs to be replaced. There was some misrepresentation about the reimbursement. There is no reimbursement for the roof, because it needs to be done now. The reimbursement we talked about through MSBA is just for the feasibility study, which would come back on a future assessment for the town. It isn't money that would just go into a coffer at the schools, because the schools don't have coffers. So I just want to be clear about that. So again, instead of going into the myriad of details of, you know, thirty teachers plus being reduced if we don't have support for the operational override for FY twenty-four moving forward, I want to go into, I believe, working, we've had a great working relationship with you as a community and Charlton as well. I want to believe we did the right thing. We're bringing, the ultimate decision is the voters. At the end of the day, it's not our decision. I actually don't live in Dudley. It's not that I don't want to live in Dudley. I just, it was a tough decision between Dudley and Charlton, and a different town won out. But we did exactly what is expected of us, is to bring this. Now, the number is huge. We're not blind to the number and the value that we're bringing forward. But again, the schools are faced with $3.6 million in just fixed cost increases. And the town, we've been working closely with the town, but we're doing exactly what people would expect, bringing it to the voters to decide. The voters will ultimately decide. And our work doesn't stop tomorrow. Regardless of what happens tomorrow, we have more work to do. But it's always, our target has always been level service budget. Nothing more. Level service. How do we try to maintain the experience that people expect us to provide to the students of Dudley and Charlton? And looking at the long view and what we tried to present here, we put in, we establish it in such a way that it has the right mechanisms to be controlled by the voter. I heard earlier tonight, slush fund. There's no such thing. This plan doesn't have a slush fund attached to it. This plan, at the end of the day, comes back to the voters. No matter what, the roof assessment's coming, the cost of educating students is more expensive, but it still comes back to the voters. And not talked about too often in these processes, and we can't have it both ways here. You have the ultimate buffer barrier from preventing the schools from saying, you know what, Dudley, why don't you pay so much more extra? It's called the Town of Charlton. Maybe I'm misreading the Town of Charlton, which, again, we talked about, you can't have it both ways. We went from two-point-two to one-point-nine. I don't see Charlton ever saying, you know what, we're going to give you so much more that it's going to force Dudley to give you so much more. It's a two-town system. It's an ultimate buffer to the process of budgeting. It's why we're, our target is level service. We're not here to try to present and try to be gluttons and say Dudley should pay more than Charlton. You can't do that. It's a balanced system between the two towns. Dudley will never exceed what Charlton wants to pay. Charlton will never exceed what Dudley wants to pay. It's a true two-town system. There is no slush fund, there is no excess. It's our job to try to put the pieces together and be, live in conservative communities and be conservative in our process. We've shown that, this is my fourth budget. We've shown conservatism in our budget year after year. I don't think we've come here to ask for excess. And we're not going to come here and ask for excess, because that's the expectation of your community and the community of Charlton. But at the end of the day, it comes down to the voters of Dudley, not only at the ballot, but at town meeting and beyond. And it also comes down to the voters of Charlton, because it's a two-town system for the Dudley Charlton Regional School System. So again, I didn't want to get into the details, because those have been well advertised. They're on our website. I'm sure we're going to talk about them again. I would ask Mr. Murray to attend school committee meeting on Wednesday night, because we could possibly give him something to do as well.
All his spare time?
In his spare time, yeah. But, you know, again, at the end of the day, I think we did what we were supposed to do. And that's bring it to the voters, to vote. And no matter what happens, we still have work to do on either end of it. So I, once again, I really appreciate the time to be able to speak this evening and talk about it. Tomorrow's a big day for everybody, but the work doesn't stop tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Kalowicz?
Just got a couple of things. Last Saturday, we had the drug takeback. We conduct this every six months, where we open up the lobby to the citizens. They come in, drop off any expired, unused prescription drugs or needles, and then we dispose of them. We had a large bin of needles that was disposed of and a hundred twenty pounds of prescription drugs. What we do is we send that to the state police. The state police then takes it to the incinerator with the DEA, and they take care of it. The other two incidents I want to kind of bring to light is kind of concerning. I didn't give too much publicity on this, because we're in the middle of investigation on this. April second, we had a call at one-thirty for a large disturbance at one forty-one Center Road. Initially, the officers, when they arrived, they pursued a vehicle that fled the scene. And at that point, they really had no information why the vehicle fled into Connecticut. There was one witness at one point that stated there were shots fired. There was other witnesses that claimed that there was nothing going on. Our officers investigated later on that day. There was no like, there was no physical evidence of any firearms or shots being fired. But later on, our officers investigated and concluded that there was two rounds at the middle that were fired at their residence. As the officers, primarily Officer Master Giovanni, worked with the Worcester Gang Unit and Webster Police and identified the suspects. We applied for arrest warrants on the suspects. And today, one of these suspects was arrested. The other one is still at large. There was no injuries, but it's alarming that this happened in our community. And the second one was last week. Our officers got dispatched for a trespass call. And upon the investigation, they located a loaded firearm on one of the individuals along with crack cocaine. Both of these individuals are unlicensed to carry firearms. They were illegal firearms. And it's alarming, only because we do see it in other communities. And now, this is two incidents in our town that we've had to deal with firearms. So it's a little alarming and concerning. We did work with Nichols College throughout the first incident, communicated with them to make sure that the students, staff were safe. They responded by hiring extra police details, patrols for that weekend. So we did work with Nichols College, but like I said, it's just, I wanted to bring up to date. There was a little bit of publicity in the first one. I just didn't want to put too much information out there as we were in the middle of the investigation. But other than that, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Chief? Chief, one forty-one is a Nichols-owned building, right?
No, one forty-one is a private residence, but it butts the, one of the dorms. And also, on the other side, you have the Grange.
Okay.
But most of the individuals involved at the disturbance were Nichols College students. That's why it was concerning, to make sure that Nichols College, public safety, was aware of our investigation.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief?
Evening, just a quick reminder, open burning ends next Monday, May first, week from today. That's it.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Board member comments? Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to thank everybody that was involved in this evening's meeting. Everyone's input is important and crucial. I hope that we see a big turnout for tomorrow. It's always good that everybody gets involved in voting and using their power that they have as residents in Dudley. All the department heads did a great job. All the department heads did a great job. I've been following them for a couple of weeks. Selectmen have been busy. Mr. Ruder and Michelle have definitely been busy and doing a great job. I, I've seen it personally over the past couple of weeks. I've been coming in and taking a look, see. The school, great job, always giving us the information accurately and efficiently. So, I hope that good things happen. I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Sol.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Mr. Landry. I hope we have a sizable turnout tomorrow. I've always said when I, when I run, I'd rather have 5,000 show up and lose than have 500 show up and win. Be nice to see a turnout that doesn't quite mirror what our local elections have the last few years. I don't think we'll get a presidential turnout, but, you know. Said it before, I'll say it again, Frank Condratovich, God rest his soul, served on a lot of committees. He told me one time, Sully, you got to vote. If you don't vote, give up your right to, can't say the word, but complain. So, if people say they don't know this issue's out there, then there's something not, something's not going on right. But I hope we have a nice turnout tomorrow. Up or down, people will speak.
Mr. Sinnevich?
Yeah, tomorrow, please vote. Doesn't matter if, if you're a selectman or, doesn't matter. Your vote counts the same as everyone else's. And like, like they've said, I still remember as a kid, seventh grade, Mr. Greenwood Civics class and on TV, the little cartoon, I'm Only a Bill on Capitol Hill. It's.
True.
Yeah, vote. There are a lot of people in this world that can't vote, and you can, so vote. That's all. Vote.
Mr. Marcy?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, everybody sort of said it already, but tomorrow's the day. Show up, make your voice heard, whether you're for it or against it. Each side made their arguments. That's what it's all about, right? And I hope to see a lot of people come there. The other thing, Mr. Chair, is I just wanted to remind the board that we still have, like, contractual obligations with Jonathan's review. And if we could send out the sheet so everybody can rate him, so we can do that at a future meeting, just so we're still in compliance. Not to, you know, talk about housekeeping stuff, but that's, that stuff's important too. So, if we could, Michelle, if we could send that to everybody, we could do that. Awesome. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank everyone for a, a passionate yet respectful discussion over the last many, many weeks. It's, it's not necessarily an easy process and it's probably not supposed to be. So, please show up and express your opinion in the democratic process and vote tomorrow. Thank you. Motion adjourned?
One move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.